Jennifer's in the waiting room. Did you let her in?
She's in.
Okay.
Yep, she's in.
All right, we appreciate everyone. You're working through, of course, again, technical difficulties. But we're all here and we got what we need. So we're going to get started. I'm going to first just read for everyone. The top of our agenda just shares where the guidance and instructions for tonight pursuant to Governor Baker's executive order dated March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the Overmeeting Law, General Law C 30A, Section 20, to school meeting procedures to ensure the safety of all participants. The public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting in person. Video and audio will be turned off for the public. Or as otherwise outlined within the public hearing guidelines. So the public hearing is a separate circumstance and we will explain about that. It's also been included in with the agenda for people to see the guidelines. This public hearing and meeting will be held via virtual meeting via the internet using Zoom technology. So you, I'm going to. Let me see. I just want to make sure people understand that for the for the regular meeting portion, we receive comments by email only and those go to the chair at bholahan@maynard.k12.us. So you're aware and for everyone to be aware, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted online. And if anyone else has, is recording, we just asked that you would chat to us so that we are aware. The chat will go to the, us as hosts of the meeting and only will be the ones that will be able to see that. Okay, so I'm going to open this, the, let me just get the right verbiage. So I get it correct. Thanks to Colleen. I have it. We're going to call the meeting to order at 7:07 for the FY '21 School Budget Public Hearing. So I am going to ask to do that by roll call vote since we are in a virtual meeting setting. So let me get to seeing all of you and do that. So I'm going to start Lydia Clancy.
Yes.
Mary Branley.
Yes.
Mauro Hogan.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
And Bethland Hulahan. Yes. So we are now in our public hearing and sorry.
Nothing.
Want to make, let, make people aware that we do have, Mary Jane is here. We're going to, also, we have some other of the leadership here, Colleen Andrade, who is helping to facilitate this meeting and takes our minutes. Jennifer Goddett, who is our Assistant Superintendent. We have Irene Who, who is our Business Manager, and we have Brian Haas, who is our incoming Superintendent. He's also here with us. We will ask that when you're not, just so that it's easier to see who's speaking when we're in gallery mode, if you're not being ready to speak at this, if you're not speaking at the moment, then if you could try to shut off your video and make sure you're muted as well. So. Here we go. Um, all right. So the first thing we're going to do is review a presentation that I'm going to share my screens so we can do a budget presentation for you, just giving a sense of where we're at moving into 2021. And that will be the basis for the public hearing discussion, the comments. And I do just want to point out just upfront that the public hearing itself, according to Master in our law, Chapter 71, Section 38N, the Maynard School Committee show hold of public hearing on its proposed annual budget. A copy of the proposed FY '21 budget can be found on the school committee website. And it's, I don't know if there's, if there's a way to tell people how to get there if you could. It's in the the information with the agenda, Colleen, for people that wanted to look at it like while they're in the meeting.
On the school website, along the top, it says FY '21 budget.
Yep, great. Thank you. During the public hearing, all interested persons shall be given an opportunity to be heard for or against the whole or any part of the proposed budget. Such hearings shall be conducted by a quorum of the school committee. For the purposes of this section, a quorum shall consist of a majority of the members of said school committee. And then we will share with you the guidelines for the public comment period just before the public comment period. So that we can make sure everyone's literally on the same page with the, that I'm reading from. And those also, Colleen, correct me, that I, we had sent those out with the agenda as well. So people should have a copy of those guidelines.
Yes, the guidelines and the Zoom instructions went out with the agenda.
Great. Thank you. That's because of your never ending miraculous work. Okay. So. So now I'm going to share my screens so that we can share with you the, the budget presentation and sorry, folks, I'm going to have to go back and see where it is, get it to the right tab. And then share. There we go. Share. And then I'm going to turn it into a presentation. All right. So let me just go up to, here we go. And I'll let the leadership team take it away.
All right, I'm presenting tonight, Bethland.
Very good.
Lydia Clancy, in case people can't see me because I don't, all I have is the slide on my screen. So I don't know who can see what. Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. I'm presenting because we had to do some last minute changes after our meeting with the town budget subcommittee on Tuesday. And because I presented at the meeting in February. And so I guess it just made sense. So can you go to the first, the next slide? Yep. So when, in putting together this year's or the budget for FY '21, one of the things that we discussed in our budget subcommittee meetings and between administration and the school committee was the necessity to increase our revenue opportunities. And so that was a directive that was given to the administration. And then the other one was to allocate resources to advance the strategic initiatives of the district. Try to increase, do what we can to increase student retention and address the school council recommendations. Next slide. So in this, and I have to read my notes from my screen. You'll see that 863,000 of the increase, it's, it's not the general, the entire general fund, but just the increase in the general fund is for salaries. And then we have the 92K for contractual obligations and instructional needs. The 27,000 for operations is very misleading. It doesn't account for the $45,000 that we anticipate receiving from the solar panel installation this summer. And so the reason why it's shown this way is because we reduced our ask from the town by $45,000. So it's not included in the overall general fund increase. So we actually will have $45,000 more than what is illustrated here. And also, the negative $117,000 for pupil services is also very misleading because it reflects 857,000. Yeah, $1,000 of expenses that are being allocated to previous and current, current year circuit breaker reimbursement. Sorry, circuit breaker funds come from the state and they help to offset sped expenses such as out of district placements and transportation. Traditionally, we try to save current year circuit breaker funds for the following year, for the upcoming years in case, because we have kids transition in or we have new placements out of district and we need to be able to cover those costs. So we try and save those. In trying to reduce our general fund ask, we are instead allocating all of the current year circuit breaker to, to offset those costs. So actually sped costs went up by $741,000. But that increase will be funded out of the circuit breaker account. And if I didn't describe that quite accurately, I'm sure that Jen Goddett or Irene Who can clear that up as soon as I'm done with the presentation. So next slide. All right.
Okay.
All right. So this slide. Originally, what we presented back in, I think it was December, we had asked for a 4.4 increase, which would have reflected an increase of $865,808. However, following that ask, we were asked to reduce it by $150,000. Now, the reason why it went from 4.4 to 3.66, because there's some other math in there that we didn't have the space to show. So the three, the 4.4 included the salary that the town was giving us money for, for the facilities director that is going to be hired. Okay. So technically, the salary comes out of our budget from now on. But for this first year, the town included that in the increase that they gave us going forward. That will be part of our, our regular budget. And it won't be part of the increase asked. So without that, without that $80,000, it would have been a 4.1 increase. With the additional $150,000 cut, that reduced it to 3.66. Now, salary contractual obligations increased by 5.8. And that increased our total expenditure for salaries by $863,241, which basically represents 99.7% of the total increase that we requested. So as you can see, there's very little wiggle room due to contractual obligations, salaries, and other expenditures that we really have very little control over. Transportation and, and curriculum requirements. So this is a very, very, very lean budget. And next slide. So these were positions that are either changing or being introduced that were part of our original budget that we presented in February. So the facilities director is a new position. The money for this year's salary is coming from the town. Next year, it will be coming from our budget. Increased guidance support for each building is a new position. Some of the the people who are being split between buildings are now going to be assigned to just one building. And so then we filled in with a new position for the other building. The expanded computer science program, K through 12. That new position, I believe, is going to be in the high school to extend the K through 8 computer science up through the high school, making that a completed pathway. The co-teaching programs in 1 through 5 are going to be completed. We have K through 2 currently and 4 and 5. And so third grade next year will be the last grade to get a co-teaching class. And that's a reallocation of teachers. And then the expanded engineering pathway courses in grades 9 through 12 are also reallocation. We're using, I believe, it's a math teacher, I'm not sure, who, who's not a 1.0 FTE. And so they will be doing both engineering and either computer science or math. I can't remember the other, the other.
Want me to weigh in?
Yes.
My notes say that it's a current math teacher who's getting certified to teach an engineering class at the high school.
Right. Okay.
Reallocation of a 0.2 of a current teacher's schedule.
Right. Okay. So it's not an additional person. It's just a reallocation so that we give someone a full time schedule. All right. Bethland, next slide. Okay. So then increased funding for literacy, professional development and coaching. That is a reallocation of a current position. And then we have increased technology curriculum and professional development funds at the building level. And that is also a reallocation. Expansion of Maynard High School leadership from a 1.5 to a 2.0 FTE. And just as a side note for this, the, the current principal of leadership and operations has been 0.5 up until now. But there was need for it to be a 1.0. So the athletic director position will now be a stipend position and the principal of leadership and operations will be a 1.0. And then the restoration of Green Meadow School leadership from a 1.5 to a 2.0 FTE. That has changed significantly. So in our original budget, we were going to restore it from the 1.5 that it was this year because Mrs. Dankner retired in October. She went to a 0.5 and Tim McGilligutti was full time. So we had a 1.5. We were going to restore it to a 2.0. However, after we were asked to reduce the overall budget by 150,000, we then realized that we didn't have the funding to hire that second principal. So we actually are going from a 1.5 to a 1.0 next year at Green Meadow. And next slide. So these, these are the areas that we have explored for increasing revenue. The first was expanding the preschool program. This obviously has been put on hold due to various circumstances beyond our control. So it would, it will, it will be in progress and we are aiming for the expansion for FY '22. For and most of these switched from FY '21 to FY '22. Likewise, the relocation of grade 8 to Maynard High School. We will be planning to do that after we review the spring's data from this current school year. We will begin to develop a relocation plan for FY '22. The increase of international student seats. Many of you know that the Beijing Royal School is planning to open a satellite branch here in Maynard. They originally would like, wanted to send 50 students to our school. However, given again, circumstances beyond our control, that is on, not looking like it is going to happen. However, there was a discussion today with them in which they stated that they still would like to try to send 20 students. So it's, it's, it is still in discussion. Whether or not we see it come to fruition, we, we don't know, but we are, we're still working on it. And then the solar panel installation, which is also on the warrant for approval, I believe. Or did the BOS already vote on it, Mary?
I think that they did vote support.
Okay. All right. So it's not on the warrant.
But it has to go to town meeting.
Has to go to town meeting. So the, the potential reduction in electricity costs for the schools would be between $40,000 to $50,000. And that's a guarantee because they're leasing the space from us. It's not that we are getting a reimbursement for, or credits. They are actually paying for the use of the, the space that they utilize for their, for their equipment. That hopefully will happen this summer. And, and then as we see a reduction in electricity costs, we can then divert that money into other funds. Other cost centers, sorry. Okay, next slide. So how do we continue the discussion? This is how we plan to continue the discussion from here and going forward. Research, always investigating broader options to fund Maynard Public Schools. Continue to evolve best practices with guidance from the state and educational professionals. Analysis, utilize DESI's demographic data, Nezdecs projections and Maynard's own historical data to analyze our spending trends. We also perform district to district comparisons. Improvement. We need, we will continue to invest in means of providing quality education for all Maynard students. And we will make data informed decisions and working towards meeting the district's strategic goals. We will manage our budget by making it work for us through prudent fiscal management and hiring practices and deepen the plans for student retention. And collaboration, which is essential right now, work closely with the town and school finance officials, state senator and state representative, and seek to determine the needs of both the school district and the town's constituents. And that is the last slide.
I just wanted to chime in, if I could, that for the, I think it's the last three years. We've, the budget subcommittee made up of two selectmen, two finance committee and two school committee members have really allowed a great collaboration for us all to understand each other's budgets and all to work, work well together and understand the full picture and really support each other. And each year it seems to just get stronger and stronger. So I wanted to put a shout out about that.
Thank you, Mary. Okay. Well, I thank you for the presentations or anything that Jen Goddett, Mary Jane or Irene Who would add from what was in the presentation. Lydia was at a couple of points, wanted to make sure that she got things represented accurately.
Oh, I was going to say I can expand on the, the computer science pathway. It was actually a full time position being hired at Fowler School, not at the high school. But it's, yeah, it's still a full time position to expand that to K through 12.
Oh.
It's okay. No big deal. Yeah.
Okay, very good. So then I'm going to.
Jennifer's. I don't know if she wants to say anything.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Jennifer. Do you have anything that you'd like to add?
I think Irene probably is better able to articulate this than I am. So we're going to unmute her as well, just in regards to the circuit breaker amount. I am not sure that that is the percent, that is the actual increase in specialization costs. It could be. I don't know. But Irene, do you want to take that?
Yeah, um, I just want to clarify that. The reason for what seems to be a decrease in what you call pupil services is that we are better able to fund that from the circuit breaker account due to increased, you know, reimbursement from the state. Now, that's because we've had increased spending, but that does result in increased reimbursement. I also do not have the exact number for what that increase might have been. I don't think it was as high as 860,000. But again, what it does reflect is our ability to fund more of these sped costs from circuit breaker and not have to take them from general fund. Other than that, I wanted to say, Lydia, great job.
Thank you. Absolutely. All right. Anything else that we need to say before we move on to the public comment period of the meeting?
Um, did we want to discuss Mary Jane or Jen or Mary Branley, the the impact that COVID could possibly be having on us in the future?
I can say a few words about that if you want. So we did meet with the budget subcommittee meeting group on Tuesday, as just mentioned. And one of the scenarios, so up to this point, it's just been a shot in the dark as far as, you know, what we should be looking at for fiscal year 2021. And we've all been working under the premise of, okay, you know, we don't really know much right now. So let's just present the way that we have prepared since February. But we were informed on Tuesday that we really should be planning for potentially a $400,000 to $1.2 million additional cut from our budget and to determine, try and figure out different scenarios. That being said, Jennifer Goddett and Mary Jane Rickson have been already, and Irene have been working on, I'd say, under the radar kind of, you know, contingencies because we don't want to have our heads in the sand. But this was kind of a more deliberate, shall I say, conversation that we really need to, to keep having. So I guess anybody want to share anything else or?
No, we can just, I can just say that, you know, we know that there's going to be an impact. The governor has not signed his budget yet. So we don't really know how that's going to affect the towns. So we just want to let you be aware that the budget we're presenting is the budget that we presented in February. However, if, you know, we do have some changes that have to be made, hopefully sooner than later. You know, we will have, we'll meet with our MEA and our teachers and the administration to come up with a plan to, to fill in those gaps or see what we need to do to ensure that our budget continues to be the best that it can be for our students.
The other piece, just in terms of that, you know, the, the $400,000 and $1.2 million reduction, you know, that doesn't necessarily mean $400,000 worth of cuts to services. We have been trying, and we've mentioned this several times incredibly hard to make sure that we are being so fiscally prudent this year that we can roll over as much in circuit breaker as we can for next year. We are trying desperately to save all of the CARES Act funding so that we have that as well. So we, we've been looking at those contingencies all along. But yes, anything, you know, obviously we can't support a $1.2 million reduction and we, we will work with town and, and union officials to make sure that we can make that reduction if we, if we need to.
If we need.
We don't, if we don't know that we will.
Natasha, you've had your hand raised.
I just wanted to, I think I kind of highlighted at the end, like right now, I was listening to that meeting as well on the other night. And right now it's all hypothetical, right? We have no data. And, and so that's why it's really hard, I think, to plan on the different scenarios because we don't have our own town revenue streams understood with the budget for the governor. So it's really not that there's any information that's being withheld. I just want to make sure that public is aware that there is no information that has even come to the town level for, for the town to even look at their budget. And so again, it's just a lot of hypothetical conversations, which makes it even more difficult because we want to plan. We want to try to prepare as much as possible. It's very hard to do that because we're, we're trying to also move forward with education and opening up wherever we can. So I do appreciate all the thought that has been put into at the various levels, the town level, the committee level, the administration, the principals, all, all, all the way down. Because I think a lot of people want answers and there just isn't any right now, which makes it very difficult. So anyway, that's just all my bad.
Get it unmute, Lydia. Yeah, I'm, I'm working on it.
Oh.
I'm, I'm asking you to unmute yourself there. Go ahead.
Um, and I think just to reiterate something that Mary Jane said yesterday, I believe it was the governor that told all the superintendents to get comfortable with ambiguity.
It was, it was the commissioner.
It was, it was the commissioner.
Which is even worse.
Yeah. Get comfortable with ambiguity. And so that is what we are having to do. I mean, we want to know, all right, do we cut four hundred thousand? Do we cut ten thousand? What do we have to do? And there, we, there are no answers. There are no answers right now. There's, there are too many variables and too many things that are unknown at this point. And we fully understand how frustrating that is for everyone out there, for families who want to plan and who want to know what next year looks like. We don't know what next year looks like.
It's also very hard because the timing of when we might find out would be, um, when planning is already happening to open. So that's the other part too, is that you're getting close to the opening and then we may have a certain, like a one eighty pivot that needs to happen, um, when information is forthcoming. Which also very frustrating.
Yeah. So I.
Yeah, I think that's also why, um, the, the different leadership groups that Jennifer has said.
But Mary, you're not, um, being heard.
Hear you.
Mary froze up.
I also, I just want to, um, mention, Mary, well, you want to finish what your sentence, what you were saying? Oh, she froze, she's still frozen. Try again.
Okay, um, I said, it, the great thing, one of the good things is that Jennifer has, um, different leadership, the different leadership groups that are actually working very hard to come up with different scenarios so that, um, you know, so that at least we can maybe pivot easier, but at least they're not locking into one. So hopefully that will help.
So I do want to move into the public hearing portion. Then we could continue, when we move into our regular meeting, we could continue to comment further on the situation. I think this is good, good context, so we want to make sure that we considered it. And just for folks to know, in the context of the, the public hearing, just because, um, the things are very uncertain and there may be some very real changes to the budget moving forward, both in needs and consideration of reopening, but also in needs for cutting. What this allows us to do for the community is we listen, we hear. We are not, um, meant to really like have a dialogue and comment at this point and we take so that we understand the communities and we're hearing and listening for your priorities. So as I mean, for, we can continue to take those into account. And as always, there are spaces for that public comment and, and, um, and spaces for emailing whatever, all those avenues for being able to share your thoughts moving forward as well. So we're going to, um, make sure we have a full hour to ensure that there's space for everyone to have a comment as anyone that would like to make a comment. What I'm gonna do is share my, um, if without objection, I'm gonna move into agenda item number two, which is the, the public hearing. So I'm moving into that, I'm gonna say it, um, I want to read the, um, public hearing. Let me just get to it. This is the, the guidelines. So I wanted to read those for folks so that they can understand because we're in a remote environment, we're really trying to figure out how to offer as many options to allow people to be comfortable as possible and be able to lodge their comment. But at the same time, um, do that in a way that allows us to manage it in a remote environment. And please know that any comment you make and anything else that you'd like to, whether, um, even if it's longer than what we have as, as three minutes will be, will be logged as part of the, the public. So, um, comments can be directed to me as the chair. So I have an email, but there's different ways that you can comment. So there are three options. If you'd like to speak, there's a raise your hand option. So, um, you click on raise your hand, you, it's, it's, um, by your name. And either, I think there's also an option down below when you hover over the bottom on your toolbar, you can raise your hand and then I would unmute you to speak. So if you're only calling in on the phone, you can press, um, star nine, the star key and the number nine to raise your hand. So that's the, that's one option for if you'd like to speak. You can also email comments to me as well, um, as thechair@bhuilhan@maynard.k12 MA.us. You want to say public comment in the subject line because there, we need to be crystal clear that you want this read as public comment, include your first and last name and your home address. So, um, and that's, that allows us to read your comment for the public hearing. Those are the boxes that need to be checked for that to happen. For those accessing via computer, the chat option will allow you to chat to the hosts of the meeting. And then, uh, the chair, myself, will read that, the comments in the chat aloud. And for those too, we need first and last name and home or address in order to, um, read those, that chat comments. And that's obviously, um, may not be obvious to everyone, but it's only available to those who have web access. So the other thing to be aware of is, um, this number three guideline below that I'm gonna go to now. All public comments are limited to three minutes. This is just to ensure that everyone who wishes to comment has had the opportunity to be heard. Comments right by the chair will only be read for three minutes. We actually do have, uh, because we're in a, a remote environment, uh, we have our, a timekeeper. And if there's like a sentence to finish or two sentences that's completely done, we'll, we'll finish reading that. If the email or chat box comments are longer, they'll also be cut off at the three minute mark. To ensure the comments are read in their entirety, it's suggested to keep them to approximately three hundred and fifty words. That allows me to read it at a slow enough pace for people to process it, um, and get to the three minute mark. So everything though, please be aware, will be submitted for a public comment, even if I don't get to read the full thing. And, um, without, um, no, no, no person will comment more than once so that we can allow as many people to be heard as possible within the public, um, hearing setting. And, um, as time allows and consider allowing further comment or, uh, from a citizen a second time, especially if it's related to something that hasn't been brought up yet, um, we know that that happens. And you can submit additional comments as well that could be part of the public record for up to twenty-four hours via email after the hearing. Um, and you also, again, need to state specifically that you want that included as part of the public comment record. So, um, and then any committee member may direct questions to the speaker through the chair. If there was something you just wanted to make sure you were clear on, uh, in relation to comments of a, of a speaker. And, um, this is really devoted time for the school committee to hear from the citizenry. And as such, the hearing structure is primarily supports unidirectional, unidirectional public recording of citizens' comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. So we just wanted to make sure that folks, um, had that in mind as well because it's an, it's an unusual structure and it can, it feels a little funny for us too. So that's it. So what I'm going to do is kind of rotate through the different modalities. And what we're gonna do is start with, I'm gonna, um, stop sharing this, but I am gonna leave it open so that I'm sure that I'm getting it. So, um, first thing that we're gonna do is see if there's anyone that would like to speak. If you'd like to speak, you can raise your hand and let us know. And, um, again, the ways that you can do that is if you, um, go to participants and then go, um, by your name, you, um, can go, you have the option to be able to raise your hand. So when you go over your name, there's more and one of the options should be to be able to raise your hand.
I don't see any raising hands yet.
I don't either. I'm not seeing it for myself, but that might be for the, the host, may not. Could someone else, um, try it just, I want to make sure that it's working.
I don't see any.
Okay, I raised my hand. Oh, Brian raised his hand.
Brian raised it.
Okay, very good.
Wait, how do I, I gotta, how do I get my hand? Oh, there we go, lower hand, okay.
You can lower your hand after you raise it.
Maybe Brian has a question. I know, he lowered it.
Okay. Let me, let me just check because I don't want to, um, keep anyone from speaking if they wanted to speak. Okay, so he showed that you can do it, thank you, Brian. I asked him to unmute, but he didn't seem to. Okay, so I just want to make sure and see if anyone wanted to raise their hand. Okay.
I'll keep looking at it if you want to check your email.
Yeah, so why don't we, um, I'm gonna check my email. Well, if anyone would like to, um, chat as Colleen dropped into the chat box, the instructions for that, so you can follow the guidelines. And then I'm gonna move over to the comments, the, um, email. I don't see anything here. All right, so let me go back. All right. So just returning into the, I'm gonna just kind of rotate through again. If anyone would like to raise their hand and make a comment, you're welcome to do so. Kind of feel like I'm getting the silent treatment, I don't know, it's a funny thing.
I mean, what, yeah, was the presentation that effective or are people just like super lost? I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so you can, if you wanted to chat, down at the bottom of your screen, there is a, there is, when you, um, hover your mouse down at the bottom of your screen, there is a chat option and you could just pop in.
Maybe that we, you know, we presented this and talked about it.
It is true.
In much more detail since December, so.
It is true.
Very good point.
Yeah, and we have had ongoing conversations, so there's nothing really new that was presented, um, aside from some shifts. I think the one hundred and fifty thousand was helpful to clarify there.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure, you know, we've kind of said everything out there, so it's good that we've been so transparent, so.
Um, and I do appreciate that it's been posted on the website, which, um, so visibly in, on the homepage, which I know historically has been a challenge where people have to find the budget. So I hope that's been beneficial to, to folks to have and I, I would certainly welcome that continuing ongoing beyond just for budget hearing.
All right. Um, yeah, I think that you make a good point, Jennifer, and I think that this has been, just for everyone to be aware, it's been one of the earliest times when the, the considerations of the budget for the next year were, were created and, and they're really, there's, it allowed for conversations to happen, um, to this point. Like, we've had several different conversations along the way, um, and gotten feedback along the way. So I, um, that's, that deserves, that's laudable. So I appreciate, I would say thank you to the, um, leadership for that. So I'm going to just return to the, to email and to see if there's anything that shown, showed up. And I don't see anything. And someone stopped my video.
I was gonna say, you, you went.
That's okay. Um, all right. Well, I honestly have not been in a position with the, the public hearing where we had extra time.
Well, let's take it.
So I just want to take one more call, also just for anyone that may have something that comes up in the context of the regular meeting, you'd also be able to, um, to, um, make a comment via email during the regular meeting portion as well.
Right, we do have citizens' comments as part of our regular meeting as well.
You have budget on there also, so, yeah.
Very good, okay. So what I'm going to do then is I am going to, it's, uh, seven forty-eight, I'm gonna get that right verbiage so that I get this right. And, um, I would entertain a motion if it seems like we're ready to adjourn the budget hearing session. And you would want to state the, the time, um, and, and say that you want to enter into regular session.
Uh, I make a motion, this is Natasha, I make a motion to, um, end the public hearing at seven forty-nine and enter into our, um, regular session for our public meeting.
A second.
All right, so we're gonna enter, we're gonna take that by roll call vote. Lydia Clancy?
Yay.
Mary Branley?
Yes.
Mauro Hogan?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Bethel Hulihan, yes. I do appreciate everyone that attended to be able to hear that and obviously, um, we can also have that presentation. Is that, could that be available or is it already available on that, um, website as well?
Uh, if it's not, we'll make sure it is. It is, it is similar to the, oh, it is, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, Colleen is the bomb.
We also talked about using the same presentation for the town meeting because it's succinct and, and says what it needs to.
Yeah, yeah, very good, okay. I, um, let me get, I think I accidentally closed the agenda, so let me open that up again.
There was a couple, if I, well, Bethel's doing that, the pieces, the slide, we're talking about the negative one seventy-five and like that, that piece, I think if we had some bullets there to clarify because I, like, things that got adjusted, it was hard for me to get to the number. It was a lot of number calculations. And I'm just thinking for the layperson who hasn't been so close to this, it might be helpful to clarify like the factors that altered that a little bit more.
We can, um, so we have some additional detail, yeah, no, we have some additional detail in some, uh, I think in the presentation that was given in December. And I believe the presentation that was given in February, we can change that slide to add that since folks will have it, um, in a hard copy during the town meeting.
That'd be perfect, thank you, Jennifer.
Yeah, we just tried to streamline this a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
Great, okay. So I do want to, now that we're moving into the, um, regular meeting portion, I just want to, um, remind folks that we are accepting citizens' comments by email only for the regular meeting while we are in a remote environment. So you want to, if you do have something, um, you would, um, email to thechair@bhuilhan@maynard.k12 MA.us. I know I sound like a broken record, but we just want to make sure as people come on and drop off that they hear this. And we can drop that into, on the chat for, oh, we may have, we may be done with chat for this time around.
Yep, we're done.
Yeah. So that can be, that can be emailed prior to and during the comment time. So the citizen's comment is agenda item number seven. And so things should be emailed. My guess is we're gonna be getting to it a little early tonight. So, uh, let me see.
Probably about, um, eight o'clock.
Yeah, around eight, eight, ten, um, eight. So, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, yeah, it's closer to eight, ten, you're right.
Yeah. Um, so, so we said before eight forty or the time the agenda item takes place. So those citizens' comments will be read aloud by the chair, also be moralized within public records and meeting minutes. You also want to make sure that you are stating that you, it's a public comment so that there is no confusion whatsoever. That's it. So, uh, the first thing for our regular meeting, which is agenda item number four, is approval of prior minutes. I don't believe at this time that we have any prior meeting minutes. And so, um, with that being said, and I just want to point out though, in the context of saying that, that we, um, Colleen's been doing an excellent job at keeping us up to date with those and getting those, um, done, turned around for us to be able to approve. And, uh, so thank you to that. Colleen rocks again. Um, so for the chairperson's report, I, I'm gonna be being completely and utterly honest, getting ready for this. And the other meetings, I have, I, I have not had a chance to put together much more of a report. I guess I always feel like it's having the opportunity to be able to say, um, just thank you for, these are just some of the most challenging times for our humanity and to have people come to it every day and, um, even to have for the, and for the community, the passion they have and that they share their perspective, I, I have the, I am very grateful for that and that this is, this is what community looks like. It's not always easy, we have hard conversations and we're gonna have more. But I am grateful for the fact that we care enough to show up and to keep trying to have them and trying to figure out the way forward and listen to each other. So, um, I guess with that in mind, um, I will say, so for, um, we do have the, um, town meeting is coming up on June thirteenth. And that is where the budget, um, tonight would, um, that we presented tonight would present, be presented to the town in its current form and, and voted upon. So just for everyone to be aware.
And I think just one thing, um, that it will be revisited. I just want to make sure that we add that caveat in there that the.
Very good point, it's being voted on in its current, um, the current state with the.
With information known now.
Right now, while at the same time, um, working on contingency planning and moving forward and prioritizations for what would need to happen as we move forward on multiple fronts.
Right, it is, it's been explicitly stated that October town meeting will likely have another budget. Right, it has been explicitly stated that October town meeting will likely have another budget to be approved.
Very good. So forgive me that I don't have a lot more to say tonight. The tree was planted at Fowler. That's happened since our last, actually, they had the celebration of it. So, so that got to happen, and I guess there were a few other things that I wanted to make sure, see if there was anything that I should cover. No, no. All right, everybody, I'm gonna let it go, because I don't want to make things up, and I apologize that I don't have anything more prepared for tonight. So I'm gonna carry, hand it off to Mary Jane for the interim super's report.
Well, I've got quite a few things. I didn't, I don't have this on my superintendent's report out, because I, I just didn't type it, because it's been a busy day today, and yesterday was packed too. So I do want to mention a little bit about what the commissioner talked about yesterday, and mostly it was really talking to superintendents and assistant superintendents about what next year may look like. And some of the things he stated is, again, as Lydia said, there's gonna be a lot of ambiguity out there. They're gonna do their best to clarify what they need us to do next year, or, you know, if we have to move forward with moving to a classroom environment, there's not gonna be a lot of funding for PPE equipment. There will be some, but the schools are really gonna have to absorb some of that, that some funding, if that's necessary, you know, thermometers, masks and such. So he was also saying that at some point, when we get these regulations and these rules, whether it be in the fall or later, a mask will probably become part of the conversation. So, so that's something that's gonna have to be purchased by the parents and, and the districts. He, you know, he was very informative, telling us at least what we had for timelines. Next week, he's going to be putting out information about end of year, summer school extended, sorry, extended school year programs, so he'll having some information about that, and what, and some equipment needs that we may need for the following year, so that we can start ordering those sooner than later, if there's any leftover funding this year. That might be a way to purchase some of these items ahead of time, so that if indeed we do open in the fall, we have the opportunity to have these, these things available already. So that, that's kind of what it was in a nutshell yesterday. Jennifer may have more, she can add. That's all I can think of. I didn't write it down, so. But I did have quite an extensive other report from the Department of Ed. DESI voted to modify the high school technology and engineering part of the competency determination for current high school freshmen, sophomores, and juniors. The high school science doesn't always necessarily take place, the 10th grade year, depending on, you know, what particular course load the students take. Some students take physics in ninth grade, whatever it may be. So the classes of 21 through class, 20, 2021 through class of 2023, the competency determination will be awarded upon demonstration that the student has earned credit for a course in that subject matter. So biology, chemistry, physics, technology, and engineering during the high school career. So that will be, we'll be getting information on that as well. I'm not quite sure if that means they don't have to take those tests next year, but right now, it looks like they're going to amend them. We don't have all of the information on that. But that being said, those students will still be able to qualify for the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, and they're working with the Department of Higher Ed to determine a fair approach to modifying the criteria. This decision only affects STE tests, which are science, technology, and engineering tests. The members of the class of 2022, which is this year sophomores, will take the 10th grade English, Languages Arts, MCAS next year. So it'll be, next year, the 10th and 11th graders will be taking the math and English, but I believe, I believe the science will no longer have to be taken for the next couple of years. So the decision follows the board's vote last month to modify the competency determination for members of the class of 2020. The vote allowed competency determination to be awarded to seniors based on successful completion of relevant high school courses in English, Languages Arts, Mathematics, and Science. What this means is students who have not passed the MCAS and were required to pass the MCAS for graduation, and have not had the opportunity to take the MCAS this year as a makeup, have now been afforded the opportunity to graduate with, without that requirement if they, if they meet the specific progression of class materials. Chuck Gabron is thrilled, and Chuck Kara Janis is thrilled about this, because we, I believe we have two students that, that may have affected, but it looks like both of them will be getting their high school diploma as a result of that. So that is excellent news. High School Sponsored Up Day Live event with 33 eighth grade Fowler students and 10 staff members. So they gathered by video to talk to our freshmen, at, the teachers and student staff, talk to the eighth graders at the high school with the guidance counselors. The students posed a lot of questions, and they, they had a lot of interaction with the staff, and it was a good way to get to know who the students were. So the Guidance Department was also able to hold a live event for 11th grade students around the topic of college planning for any application process, because as you know, once the summer comes, these applications for colleges have to start getting looked at and such. So thanks, go out to our guidance counselors, Amy Petroski, Nicole Fernald, and Dana McPhee for orchestrating this informative and well-attended event. Couple of year-end activities I would like to bring to everybody's attention. Fowler, I grade eight, on Friday, May 29th, is gonna be an eighth grade trivia night at 5 o'clock. On Thursday, June 11th, there'll be an awards assembly at 10 a.m. It'll be livestreamed on Google Meet. On June 12th, there'll be a promotion ceremony on that will also be at 10 a.m., and on Monday, June 15th, there'll be a moving on drive-by parade at 1 o'clock in the Fowler parking lot. Grades four through seven, there are gonna be an end-of-the-year games and challenges on the week of June 8th, and their step-up day will be on June 15th at 10 a.m. at Google Meets by grade level. The grade three, there have been some community meetings with third graders and the Fowler administrators, and there was one game night for third graders. There was an online parent coffee for third grader parents, and third graders and their parents will be getting morning announcements, have been getting announcements since May 15th. So the Green Meadow has also planned a grade three drive-out day, and it will be taking place Monday, June 15th at 11 a.m. So I'm great, I want to send kudos to our Leadership and Operations principals, have done a really good job putting these things together to make sure that our students stay connected and really have some sort of closure at the end of the year. Leadership and Operations principal has also been working with the staff to ensure that there's some time given to staff to collect their personal belongings before the end of the year. Willie Fowler is starting tomorrow, and the other two schools will be starting that next week on a very structured, according to the nurses who have been very involved in this, they're staying on top of us. Our nurses have been incredible. So there'll be a staggered and rotating schedule for the teachers to get their personal belongings. Couple of updates from MSBA, oh, just one update. We received the letters of interest to join the Green Meadow Building Committee. I think we have three at this point, and if anyone is still interested, we'll still accept applications until June 1st, because June 1st is Monday. If you'd like to email us an applicant, a letter of interest, we'd be happy to consider that as well. On the information for joining the MSBA Green Meadow Building Committee can be found on our website. And the rest of it I will talk about during the rest of the agenda. That's all I have.
Great. All right, thank you.
Mary Jane, I just wanted to make one, one clarification, only because I'm involved in the awards assembly, and I know it's been a moving target. So the award ceremony is June 11th, but it's actually going to be livestreamed at 6 o'clock, 6 p.m.
I didn't get, yeah, I, I'm gonna do that with the, with the Fowler plans. What did I have on?
You had 10 a.m., so I just wanted to get a change to at night. They need the extra time.
When I reported, I'll pay, I'll put 6, whatever you put. Thanks, Mary.
Small detail.
All right, that's all I have. Very good. Thank you. That was, that's a good amount. So, all right, so now we are going to move into agenda item number seven, which is citizens-
Wait, I have a question real quick. I'm sorry.
Oh, sure, sorry. I was looking at the agenda, not you.
So the MSBA piece is one of those, don't we have to appoint a school committee member? What is?
Yeah, we can do that. We'll definitely do that once I get all the applications, and then I think probably at the next school committee meeting, that will be on there, and then we have to have that up by the 30th of June. So we have a little bit of time. So that's certainly something. I think the next school committee meeting, like, as I said, I'm gonna put that on the agenda. Hopefully have the team together, and the only ones we'll have to add left will be the members of the school committee. That is absolutely true, yes.
Okay, so we will have that on the next meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
As I said, I'd like to see what we get for, for interest, and we can fill in no slots, and then if maybe some school committee member have some expertise, maybe, I'm just kidding.
In the building?
And that'll be the next, that'll be the next.
Yeah. I don't, I don't, definitely don't moonlight as a contractor, but.
Yeah, but that has to go out June 30th. So as I said, I think, I think, if Colleen can correct me, I think we only have three letters at this point, and we do have, I think we have another person, four, four letters at this point.
And those are letters from community members to represent, yeah?
Yep, yep.
Because there are others, for people to be aware, there are other, there are other roles that are filled from different positions in the town and then the schools.
Correct.
Has that, Mary Jane, we haven't seen, I guess the list, I know we, we've seen it, the school committee, but I don't know if the community has seen the prescribed list of the defined roles that are go, that go, that are part of the building committee. Is that something that we should, I don't know where to put it, but.
I don't think it can hurt, Natasha. I can certainly, you know, we talked about it, one of the school committee members, but we can certainly go back and put that somewhere. I'll have, we can make a folder or something on, on the website with MSBA information.
Yeah, because I imagine it's gonna be kind of Fast and Furious coming in with all the things that we've done already, and it might be a good place to archive, you know, like, our statement of interest, all those pieces, to have a place people can have easy access to.
That is a good point, and I think we will definitely do that. It was in my, my plan, but.
No, I also remember the transparency, ClearGov, I thought there was an option to do one project a year, and Jennifer, I don't know if this is, this is, this rings a bell at all. I know Michelle was more involved in this, but there's a piece of it. I thought that you could do a project. Now, what that means, I'm not really sure of, but I thought there was, I thought that was, the idea was floated around about potentially using it for one of these things.
Yeah, the initial thought was to use it for the Green Meadow project, and I don't know why. I don't remember if it was for last year's project or the roof or what have you. But yes, we can do that. We can certainly put it on there and talk with them. At this point, we have not connected with ClearGov in any capacity, but I certainly can add that to our sort of to-do list for the summer, to make sure that, because that would be great to have that up there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good. Okay, so I'm gonna move into the next item, which is citizens' comments, and that's item number seven. So I'm gonna just remind people again, for anyone who may have just joined, we accept citizens' comments. So we are starting this at, I have to do math, 8:08, so we can go to 8:23. So we are going to accept comments via the email only for our regular meetings while we're in a remote environment. So you can send those to bhoalan@maynard.k12.us. That's in your, the posted agenda. So just to be clear, that you can send them through until the end of public comment. We obviously estimate that it's 15 minutes, but if we, we may end sooner if there aren't many comments. And we also do ask that you make sure to be, to designate that it is for public, for citizens' comment in the subject line, so that we're very clear, so that there is no confusion. So I'm gonna go to email now to take a look and give people a moment. I, I just got something in via email. If the individual who sent this would like it to be a public comment, I just, I'm gonna need you to resend it and state that it's a public comment. And I apologize if that's what we'll need to do. So I'm gonna give a minute for that. And I do apologize to everyone, but I, we have honestly, sometimes when they're coming in, and I'm trying to multitask and like read, and then keep track of time and do a few things at the same time, and make sure that I've got, I'm reading the right things, I can make a mistake, and it's not fair to people to do that.
Well, it's not very intuitive, I'll say that. I mean, I think trying to be sensitive to make sure everyone is heard, and respecting people's privacy for people who don't want to be heard publicly is a very tricky thing to juggle. So I appreciate your diligence in trying to navigate that so methodically.
Okay, here we go. So I have a public comment. Oh, no need to be sorry, a public commenter. Okay, so this is Linda Thayer, 14 Chandler Street. She says, "Thank you for all the work the members of the school committee, staff, teachers, and others have been doing to get the district through this challenging time. Your dedication is appreciated." Exclamation point. "If the budget needs to be adjusted to a decrease in funding from the state, what is the process for making reductions?" So I, I feel like that might be, that's a good thing to cover, to be able to share what we, what we might know about that at this point. Do we have a sense of what we could say about that?
Ben would be a good person to address that.
All right, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Absolutely. So I'm sorry I put you on the spot, but, so Linda Thayer was asking, in addition to saying thanks, she was asking, "If the budget needs to be adjusted due to a decrease in funding from the state, what is the process for making reductions?"
It depends on, it depends on a lot of different factors. The first piece that we would look to is whether we have any contingency funds through the CARES Act or through, you know, increasing current year circuit breaker spending and things of that nature, if there's any way that we could adjust our operating budget accordingly, and that would be where we would look first, so that we are not adjusting sort of staffing levels and things of that nature. Then the next piece would be, you know, if we needed to begin to look at staffing levels, we would be working, working with our administrators and our various union representatives to make sure that we're doing that in the legally required and fair process that we would follow based on those components. And then obviously, things would be, come through the school committee in terms of getting our directors from the negotiation subcommittee as to those negotiations. So I don't know if that's a clear enough nebulous answer, I apologize, but just because we don't know, there's so many things that we don't know at this moment, including when we would understand when those reductions may be needed, including what kind of educational environment we will be in in the fall, and what additional resources we will need, and what potential offsets we would have. It's just hard to provide a very specific timeline.
So Jen, is it, is it safe to say it depends on the amount that we're being asked?
Yep.
It depends on what our lift is for the fall, potentially as well, right? Because that will factor in, and then once those are known, then you go and have to reassess, like, trying to keep it as far out of the classroom as possible, and then obviously conversation. Okay, so I just want to make sure that's kind of the synopsis of-
Yep.
Analysis.
Thank you for fielding that, because I felt like I, it had occurred to me when we get to the budget portion to, to talk about that and have a sense of next steps. There was a follow-up from Linda Thayer, asking about if we would end up having another public hearing, which, I mean, it's a, it's a good question. I think it, I don't know that that's out of the question, but it will probably depend on a lot of factors, yeah.
And I would think we've been putting the budget on every single one of our agendas.
We have, and we will continue to do that.
Exactly. I think it's a compelling type of discussion that we'll just keep making people aware of.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I don't think the public hearing is necessary for every time you do the budget, because remember, masks said you can vote on the budget at every meeting. Doesn't mean you have to have a public hearing, but we have been allowing public comments at, you know, for each of those times, so.
Yeah, we've moved, when we've had, when we have presented the budget, we moved the public comment to after that, so that people could comment. Mary Jane, were you gonna say something as well?
I forgot what I was gonna say. That's okay.
Okay, it'll come back to you.
It will.
Yeah, after, yeah. All right, so I'm gonna return to-
Mauro has a comment.
Oh, okay.
I, I took her question more as, are we gonna have a public hearing before we have to vote in October? I don't know if that's right or not, if that's how, but that's how I took her comment, and it seems to me that if we're gonna have to, to- if we're going to have to, to cut quite a bit, we should definitely do some sort of public hearing before that meeting.
Yeah, this is new territory, so I'm sure we'll get some guidance moving on, I'm sure.
Yeah, and it, so we can, we can also talk a little more about this during the, the budget portion and next steps and kind of considerations for that. So I think, I appreciate getting clarification for that question. All right, so I'm just returning to email to see if any other public comments come through. We keep oscillating between using public comment and citizens' comments. I'm taking both.
Public, so we're good.
Yeah. Okay, I'm not seeing anything further. I do want to just wait one more minute, because in case there's a delay and something coming through. But also, please know that anything that comes through during the meeting, and again, to be aware that if you had a comment that for some reason you weren't able to lodge, you can email within the next 24 hours, and that will be included with the public record as well. Email me. Let me just check. Okay, I'm going to just hit refresh just to make sure. All right, I think we're good. So with that in mind. Say hi to your family for Mary Jane. So if 8:16, we're going to now move into our next agenda item, which is the F-21 budget, which we did start talking about. So that was all very, it's a good, good movement. So we, we've allotted 20 minutes for this. We just were putting the budget on every agenda, because there's been so many moving pieces and so many things considered in this uncertain and unprecedented time. So we felt that it was prudent to always have that on the agenda for us to consider where we're at right now and what we're considering as we move forward, even if we don't have answers. So I would open it up to any, anything that we have to say, like anything further people want to start with around budget beyond what we just presented and talked about, or in addition to.
I guess I would just say generally that an awful lot of work has been put in by both the, all the principals, the, you know, administrative staff and, and teachers, school councils to come up with, I think, given the timeframe, a really, really good, good budget that through attrition and different things that have been going on in the schools has also allowed us the opportunity to keep pushing the school system forward, which is what we absolutely have to keep doing to provide the best, best opportunities, best education for our kids. So I feel at this moment in time, really good about this, this budget. So it's generally.
I would say ditto to that. Lilia, I wasn't clear if you had raised your hand before Mary spoke. Did you raise your hand, or are you just moving?
Oh, I was probably, I don't know, picking my nose. I don't know.
Perfect. All right, just wanted to make sure. Okay, go ahead, Natasha.
I guess one thing I worry about is that our budget includes hiring positions and how does that, or new positions, how does that, how do we anticipate dealing with that if we're then looking potentially with what the, the tribe board is saying, that we might have all these, this cuts? And is that compromising a new position that we're just hired? I mean, I just don't, I don't understand the dynamics of how, how that really makes sense to do, that we would be hiring somebody now and then potentially in October, you know, depending on whatever the job is, and I'm guessing if they're, they'd be lower senior, I don't know. I just don't understand how that really works or think from a business perspective.
Okay, Irene, I'm going to unmute Irene, ask her to unmute.
Um, well, there's a couple of things with that. There's always a risk, any, anytime somebody is hired. And unfortunately, particularly if you're talking about hiring into a union position, it's based on seniority, assuming equal qualifications. Okay, so I just want to throw that in there, just so people remember that. So again, especially in these times, anyone who's done their homework in getting a position, first of all, this is going to be true throughout the state. I don't think there's a single school district that's sitting there, everything's fine, no matter what happens, and that gee, I'm going to go work there because I know that there's never going to be a problem. No. Even the wealthiest districts are struggling and are talking about various things that could happen come the next year. So this isn't going to be a huge surprise to anybody. And most of the new, the only two really quote new positions are number one, the facilities manager, and the hope with that position is that there are going to be increased efficiencies in the buildings. And that, not that it will quote pay for itself, but there should be things that are happening over time that will make that position worth having done. And it's something they've wanted to do for several years, and you could almost make the argument that it is even more necessary now, because at least for the next two years, we're going to have to be worried about anything we're doing physically in a school is going to look different than it has in the past. Cleaning is going to have to be far more thorough. We may be needing to use new materials and new equipment to do not just cleaning, but sanitizing. So I think what's really happened is we've probably picked the best time to actually bring this person on board. So yes, on the one hand, because always what you're thinking is, oh, the last people we want to cut are teachers. And I can assure people that I know that whoever's running this, that is going to be the last on the chopping block. But if you're looking at a $1.2 million cut that's going to have to happen, hopefully it won't come to that. So to answer your question, nothing's guaranteed, and we just have to go forward and try to do our best. And as Mary Jane said yesterday, or said today, what they were stressing on that call was you, we just have to learn to live with ambiguity for a while. And I know that's not necessarily a great answer, but it's the reality that we are in today.
I mean, we can't stop the world, we cannot move forward in fear that we might have, that we might have to do this. So we're, and I know the town, you know, supports whatever, you know, they're, we're working with them. And I, I know that they're not, you know, relishing the fact to have us, to, to have us do anything drastic. So I'm sure that we're going to work together and do our best to hopefully ensure that this doesn't affect these new positions, because we want to also remember that some of the things that are happening, our kids are going to other districts, and, and we want to keep them here. So we still have to offer programs to keep our students in the district. So in order to do that, we need to offer these positions, and then we could save money if they stay in. So it kind of washes in the end.
And Natasha, in terms of, you know, you have someone coming in that will be lowest on the seniority list with, with potential reductions. Those reductions take place within areas of certification. So just because you're necessarily the last teacher hired doesn't mean that you're going to be the first teacher sort of let go in that capacity. It, it depends on your certification area. So that would be if we are in the worst case scenario, which again, I don't think that we will be. I could be wrong. I've been wrong before occasionally. You know, but if we are in the worst case scenario, we will be working with the MEA, we'll be working with the paraprofessionals and the custodial and secretarial unions, you know, with the guidance and the, the sort of support of the school committee negotiations group to make sure that where we are making reductions, if, if in fact we need to do that, which I want to emphasize again, we're hoping and we believe we may not, may not, need to do so, that we are able to do that in a way that preserves and protects what Mary Jane was just saying about the programming, we need to keep our students here, but then also the supports that we need to make sure that all of our students are healthy and well, and that are provided with an opportunity for a high-quality education. So it's not sort of a one-in, one-out.
Right.
I guess the other piece I would ask is that I know we, we were talking about union per se, but I would also want to understand about approaching administration. I know some school committees have gone to their administration where they've agreed preemptively to certain percentages. Again, everyone's kind of taken their own approach, depending on what their needs are. And would that potentially be a conversation that we would address? I just, we just keep talking about, okay.
So absolutely. The, when we met, we met as a budget subcommittee after the tribe board subcommittee meeting and came up with, you know, I think three or four different scenarios that, you know, what could a $1.2 million reduction look like? Significant portions of that were from the administrative level, including positions, not just salary freezes.
Well, no, and I was thinking, like, you read some, there's so many articles out there. You could get lost in all the various ways people are trying to go through this, you know. I, I forget which community in, in Massachusetts, but they were, I guess, administrations that all agreed to like a 2% or whatever preemptively, you know, a certain percentage across the board where it was, it seemed fair in, in respect to everybody was affected in the same way, and it saved jobs in other ways. So I just, you know, I'm glad to hear that those conversations are happening, and I appreciate that. You know, it just, you know, it always just seems weird that we're, in many places, people are doing hiring freezes. And so for, it just feels weird that we're not.
Mara?
I, I had the same thoughts as Natasha, that it just, it does, did seem weird, but considering that the town has told us that they want us to go forward with our, with our budget. I, you know, from my point of view, we have to go by, you know, what the direction has been given. And I, and I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that has been involved with that. I know it's been a lot of work and the collaboration throughout the town and INCOM and our board, I think, has been absolutely fantastic. And I think that makes me feel a lot better about the, the budget that we've put forward, that we're, it's, it's across the whole town, that it's not just in our little silo. So that makes me feel a lot better. Feeling like I, I can put my name behind this and that it's, it's good. So thank you.
Well, I, I will say that the, the meeting the other day was pretty contentious, more so than I think I would have expected to hear about the budget. And I, I think one of my hesitations now, again, is because it did not seem, when hearing Greg, the town administrator, and Mike Guzzo speak, that they were not as competent in our proceeding with status quo. So again, it seems some, like there was some wavering there on the approach. And I don't know the right way of the approach without having concrete numbers. And I, I know that's the conundrum. Without numbers, how do you, you know, reassess? But that's where I think I, you know, am just hesitant on, it feels like approving the same thing, but as long as we understand when they do have more information in June, because that's what it sounded like, they, the town would have more information in June for receipts and potentially governor information, that we may be needing to reassess the budget and approve a different budget shortly thereafter.
The issue, Natasha, is that we don't know what those numbers are.
Right.
Again, the town gave us the number, you know, after press for a significant period of time, 400,000 to 1.2 million. We could certainly move forward and reduce our budget by 1, 2, 1.2 million, so that we are prepared for whatever the worst-case scenario is. That being said, there are so many unknowns in terms of what our operations will be like, what different savings we potentially have in terms of rolling things over to this year, what additional funds may be coming in from the federal government, how we could potentially use other funds within both the school department and the town departments in order to do things. There are so many different unknowns that to, to do so. And I can tell you, I, I, we did those scenarios, and it's not pretty. You know, and I've done this in multiple districts, cutting millions of dollars. So we can do that. However, there is a significant likelihood that even if we were to be as conservative as that, there is, there would be a necessity to bring back or to change the way we are doing it, once we know what some of these additional components, what some of these additional pieces are. So, you know, and we stressed, if you listened into that meeting, if anyone listened in, we stressed very strongly that it is really not possible for us to cut $1.2 million from the school department budget in October. So if, as we get better numbers from the state, which we hope will happen in the next month or two, as we get better numbers or better ideas of what our, our instructional and, and educational paradigm looks like in the fall, then we will need to have, we may need to have some difficult conversations in terms of what we do from there. But I think to do so without having any sort of clarity around what those numbers need to look like and what our operations need to be, I, I, I think what is going to push us in a, in a direction that will be hard to come back from.
No, I, I agree. I'm not looking to have everyone spin their wheels with hours worth of hypotheticals. I think waiting till the data comes in. What, to your point, what you mentioned, October is pretty late, and that's what the town keeps referring to, is October, but from an operation, school operation, that's when school, children are already in, doing a class, they're in their classes, and you. So it sounds like there is a very strong likelihood the summer, July, will, will be revisiting this.
Yes.
I want to give Irene a chance to speak. I, I think you're, are you speaking to what Natasha's talking about?
So Natasha, the other thing to keep in mind is fortunately the town had, the, the town and the district together had conservatively put this budget together, assuming no increase in Chapter 71 funding to begin with, and not even counting on any money from the Student Opportunity Act. A lot of the districts that you're hearing about were counting on, you know, a million-dollar increase in their Chapter 70 funding. You know, some of the bigger, you know, places like Fall River, you know, Lawrence, Lowell, were counting on millions of dollars in student opportunity.
Now, these weren't any of those districts, but I, I have heard that the, I heard Mike reiterate that piece, the conservative, he was very conservative.
Exposure to very negative things is much lower. Notice, I'm not saying it's zero. It's not zero. But as Jennifer mentioned, in looking at some of our hypotheticals, what-ifs, we're, we're prepared to go ahead and, and make some of those. And we, we literally were advised by, by the lawyer not to try to do a preemptive negotiation, you know, with, with the largest union. Because as you said, you're spinning your wheels, you're spending money doing this, especially if the lawyers are involved. And it's, they're not going to want to do it without numbers. In other words, if they're going to give something up, they want to know it's because they absolutely have to. So until you can go to them and say, yes.
Yes, yes. I just want to pause that piece of the conversation right there, if I can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mary? I put my hand up, did you see?
I did, good job.
I'm getting used to this. But no, I guess, call me Pollyanna, because I tend to be, but wouldn't it be unfortunate if the cuts, because so much work is being done in, on the, the school side about, as Irene just said, and as Jennifer has said, you know, there are certain scenarios that we can absorb some of these, and wouldn't it be unfortunate for us to lose a year? I guess that's what I keep thinking about. And until, again, you know, even talking to Mike Guzzo and versus Greg Johnson, they have different thoughts about this. So even our two, you know, finance people don't know what to say. So until we have, as everyone's been saying, data, I think we need to move forward with this, with this plan. It makes the most sense. So.
And I do want to be clear about one component, because I know that, that there were conversations. Greg Johnson, Mary Jane and I, and Mike Guzzo have had conversations subsequently from Tuesday afternoon or evening. We, we are on the same page. We are working together. We will continue to have meetings with Irene, with Mike. They, they are having regular meetings. Mary Jane and Greg will be connecting together with myself as well, and obviously bringing in Mr. Haas as well. So I don't want anyone to, to think that this is, that we are not working with the town and, and that there is not collaboration between the two organizations and how to do this in the best interests of, of the Mainor community as a whole.
Thank you.
And I do want to see, I was, I was a few comments, but I feel I always want to make sure everyone else gets to say what they want to say first. This chair, does anyone else have anything that they want to? They? I, I, a few things were highlighted for me. One was considering if we have. One was considering if we have, some of these are things that, I guess, when I, at the point, this point, having these items on the list aren't so that we can get definitive answers, it's just so that we can know where we are right now. And that may mean that we say we have no, we have no idea for these particular things, right? So it speaks to something that Natasha was talking to, and as far as timing, so technically for us, there, what, in the meeting that you had, so far, does the town feel like we'll be able to have, when might we have a sense of what numbers could look like? Do they tell you?
So the town doesn't know, we don't know. The state has gone back to redo their budget. There was, on the commissioner call yesterday, Mary Jane, I believe he mentioned that there is possibly maybe kind of a moment where the legislature might consider providing information on local aid ahead of the full budget, maybe.
That's what he said, maybe, just like she said.
So that could come out in the next month or two. Generally speaking, we don't get the town, or the state's budget, pardon me, we don't get the state's budget, no one gets the state's budget until July or, or end of June anyway. So I would anticipate that being delayed a month or two. But that does not mean that we can't read the tea leaves in terms of conversations. I know that our town officials are connecting with our legislative leaders as well to, to figure out what's happening there. And again, we, we've been doing this, as has the town, as, you know, Mary Jane, Irene, myself, we've been on about, you know, multiple calls a week, where this has been a topic of conversation, and immediately following, we sort of all huddle up and say, okay, what did you hear, what did you hear, what do you think that means, right? So we will continue to do that, the town will continue to do that, and, and will work forward and provide as much information as early as possible. Again, one of the things that we emphasize, and then, and Greg and I chatted about as well, is the need to make decisions for the school department, particularly when it comes to staffing levels sooner than October. But he also understands, as I hope folks do as well, that we don't know what our opening looks like, and should we be remote only, should we be hybrid, should we be back full? Occupancy is going to have very different looks in terms of staffing and things that we need to do.
And that has different budget implications.
Correct. There's different budget implications. We are anticipating getting guidance. They use that phrase, recommendations and guidance from the state in a couple weeks, so middle of June in terms of our reopening plans. As you mentioned, we have buildings, we have over 70 members of our staff and administration working on reopening plans, looking at all of the, the various contingencies with those assumptions that we had put forward, so that we will be ready to shift to whatever comes forward from the state, both in terms of directives and in terms of guidance.
So they're coming down with guidance in, you said, around two weeks?
That's what they said.
Okay. And that guidance, though, what I'm trying to understand, so that guidance is meant to help with planning, but they don't know any more than any of the rest of us what things are going to actually look like.
Correct.
Come September, as far as public health data and...
Financial data, any of those things. Yeah, yep.
Great. And it also contingent up, you know, on these stages, you know, what happens if we have to regress back to stage one? You know, what is that going to look like if people are, you know, you know, looking at the disease and is it accelerating, is it slowing down? You know, so that's, they can predict, you know, but I don't, again, it's...
The one thing the commissioner did say in that regard is that they've been looking at models from other countries more so than other states. And in the other countries that they've been looking at, obviously understanding that, you know, different countries around the world have different challenges and opportunities in regards to healthcare and stuff like that. They have not seen an entire nation that has reopened and then completely shut down. It has happened in pockets, it's happened in places. But so, I mean, if you look, you know, one of the things that we, because we're Massachusetts, we often compare ourselves with the PISA scores and other assessment results as a country, you know, unto itself, other than within the United States, to these other nations. So if you look at it in that capacity, just look at it that way. Yeah. Beth Lynn, this is your area of expertise, right? You're probably...
No, not epidemiology. I do like public health, intervention programs, service delivery, and trying to, health equity, you know, that kind of stuff, vulnerable populations, a little different.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes. But, so, so I guess then, what that leaves, and we've been speaking to this, and I just want to point out again what Jennifer was saying, is terms of process, as we move forward, from the school committee perspective, we're having, the budget is on every agenda to moving forward, and so that we can, we can share where we're at, which may mean that we end up saying, we don't have any more answers in this area right now, but this is what we're considering right now. So that people are aware of the, the decision-making processes, the factors being weighed, and the conversations happening amongst all the, the, the various stakeholders in, in the town and in the community. I also, so Jennifer spoke to the, what the staff are doing from the various spheres in the town, and, and the way that they're interacting with the school department, and, and speaking with Dussey, and speaking with others, but the, the subcommittees are also still meeting, so just for folks to remember that there's still the tri-board occurring, which is between the FinCom, the school committee, and the Board of Selectmen, and then there's also, just the, the budget subcommittee is also still meeting. Lydia, go ahead.
I just wanted to throw out there or ask, at what point do we stop waiting for guidance and just pull the trigger and make the decision, look, we know we're not going back to school full-time, let's just call it, let's just plan for, you know, a hybrid model with the contingency of all remote, because at some point we may have to go all remote next year, and just go with that. I mean, there's only so long we can delay, given that we have so much professional development that we're going to have to do, and so much curriculum revision depending on the mode of, of instruction. And, and then that gets into negotiating contracts, and we don't have, we don't have any time to waste, right? We don't have any time to spare, and I almost feel like we need to call it sooner than later. And I understand that we don't know, we don't have enough information to go on, but I think we can pretty much guarantee we are not going back to school full-time in the fall.
So we need to... A $64,000 question. We discussed that this morning among the Valley Collab SBAs, and a couple of them were basically saying by a date in August, in early August, they're simply going to say, that's it, we're online, we're remote. And, you know, almost like some districts did back when this whole thing started, and the governor hadn't yet shut down the schools, and several school districts said, we're shutting ourselves down, you know, we're, for the moment. Yeah, there's a point, like you said, you know, a lot of districts are probably going to be doing the same thing. You will have safety in numbers, you will have compatriots.
Yep.
Yeah, no, we're, this is it, this is what we are going to do.
And Lydia, in terms of that piece, we kind of have already shifted. The planning that the folks are doing is much more focused on the hybrid and the remote-only instruction. We, you know, so we're focusing first on the hybrid because, you know, it, it seems to me to be the most likely, given, you know, that, that schools are, are daycare for a lot of families, right? And we need to get folks back to work, and there's an economic component of that. Obviously, we will only be doing that with the directive and the, the guidance and, and making sure that we have the health and safety components in there. But that seems to me to be the most likely scenario, that we will be opening a hybrid model in the fall. And so we need to figure out how many desks do we fit in a space, and how do we get kids in the building? And so there, that's really, we already are shifting in that direction.
And how do we keep masks on kindergartners and preschoolers and...
How do we do that? How do we make sure that we have, you know, so on the call, the commissioner call, you know, they talked about, are you going to install heat sensing cameras? Are you going to have people checking thermometers at the door? And what are you doing on buses? And, and so all of those pieces are really what we're working on. What we're really waiting for on the guidance is the guidance from the state on what those hybrid options could look like. And once we get that, the other thing that I want folks to know, and I believe we've mentioned this, but I'm losing track of what conversations I've had where, we are going to survey our families and our staff to figure out, you know, one, what are folks comfortable with? Are, we want to be, as I mentioned at the last meeting, as flexible as possible and provide as many options as possible so folks are comfortable, both coming into the building and/or providing services or receiving services. But then also looking at, you know, a hybrid option, is it based on what the state comes up with? You know, is it one week on, one week off? Is it a couple days during the week, a couple days not? And figure out for our families what may work best, because depending on the demographics of the community, there may be a significant number of people who can work from home, may not be ideal, but could do it. But we may not have that, those demographics in terms of the workforce here, and so we want to find out, you know, what, what is our best option in terms of supporting our community? We had talked about sending out the survey ahead of time, but as our MEA president, Mike Waldron, very thoughtfully reminded me, let's wait until we get that guidance from the state so that nothing we put out is then taken off the table by the state and create confusion. So I appreciated that, that component. And like I said, we're meeting with the union regularly, both, we're meeting with the MEA regularly, and we will pull in all of the, the unions so that we can have the best plan, that our teachers are prepared and our students are prepared, you know, and families are prepared to be able to come in, whatever the fall looks like. And also, we're also working on the summer, to try to figure out what we can do over the summer, so that, so that folks have opportunities there, both for remedial learning, if that's what needs to happen, but also just sort of keeping, keeping tab on the learning since it's been so disrupted this spring. So we're working on all those pieces. I don't think anyone thinks we're going to be back with 100% occupancy in the fall. But as I mentioned on Tuesday, there is a significant likelihood that we will be back in 100% occupancy at some point in the, the next academic year. So when we're talking about staffing levels and things of that nature, we need to be cognizant of that.
Sorry.
No, sorry, I just want to point out that we're about eight minutes over.
Sorry, I just want to ask, so have you guys done the exercise of, like, figuring out a drop-dead date for when we have to make the decision in order to allow enough time for other things to fall into place?
Um, no. I anticipate, no. I could guess at this moment, but I don't necessarily want to. I think it'll be sooner rather than later, but not in the next two weeks.
Right.
So essentially, you'll see what the state guidance says, and then...
CDC's recommendations really take a huge, you know, is really part of the conversation, and, you know, we really have to be cognizant of what they're looking at.
Right.
With anything, that really comes first and foremost, you know, what are the guidelines to make sure that our staff and students remain safe?
And I forwarded that to everyone so that you could see the graphic that they, it's, it's easily, if you, if anyone Googled CDC reopening schools...
Yeah.
They, you'll quickly find they have a nice little kind of infographic that lays out the criteria to consider and gives you a, kind of like, decision tree for whether or not you could be opening. All right. So if we're good for now, then we'll move to the next agenda.
Has Brian's in the audience? Did we want to ask him if he has any thoughts on this, or...
Yeah, he's going to be stepping up, so he has to...
Yeah. Yeah. Brian, if you're okay, as, we're, just for everyone to be aware, Brian is the incoming superintendent who starts on July 1st, and so he's been looped in. I don't know if it's more than he wanted to be, but he is very looped in at this point. Brian, would you care to say anything?
I have been looped in, I've been paying close attention, and been participating in most of the same conference that Mary Jane and Jennifer have participated in as well with the commissioner. And the one consistent thing he says is comfortable not knowing for the short term. And they've said that really tonight, and I've heard them, and I've heard the commissioner say that, and I say that at my current district as well, is that we just don't know what we don't know, and that, and, and that is really focused on budgets and reopening, kind of the two topics of conversation for everybody all day long. So, to your point, the budget, as you presented it, I think made a lot of sense, and it was based in fact, and there's no reason not to move ahead with that, knowing what you guys have already said, we're probably going to have to look at budget in, and we may have to look at it next year, even in October, but I agree, you're not going to, if possible, we would not look to make programmatic changes once the school year started. We, to Lydia's point, we would try and make decisions over the summer as early as possible if change is needed to meet a budget issue prior to this school year.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. And I, I guess, one of the things that, the, I ask about process around that, because if you have the structures where those conversations are continuing to happen as an information and you're being responsive and, and being proactive and trying to consider as you go, and strategic in that thinking and engaging with the different stakeholder groups, that, then I, that allows me to be like, okay, so when we, as we do know, we'll know when we need to call it. We'll know when, and, and so I do appreciate, even as we're talking it through, it allows us to all kind of bring in those different considerations for when the moment is, is ripe. In this ambiguity that we must live with, that's going to be like...
Going to be the word of the year.
Yeah. Ish. Okay. It's like the Pee-wee Herman Playhouse, where we'd be like, ambiguity, and we go, ah! Okay. Mara, one more thing, and then is it all right if we move on?
Yeah, I'm just wondering whether or not, it says vote required, but I, I'm assuming that we don't, because we've already voted?
No, we, we need a vote.
No. What we do is if we wanted to make, so after the public hearing, if we wanted to make any changes to the budget, this would have been the, the time where we could have that conversation and consider changes to a particular piece or not. Otherwise, yes, so I, I appreciate that, because I was thinking like, well, it, it's, it's as it stands, but I think we should make that vote before the, the town meeting so that, that it's all official.
So do we, are we not voting tonight?
Yeah, no, I think we should vote right now, yeah.
Okay, okay, that's what I was, I was confused, okay.
Yeah, I, I was having in mind, I was thinking about the, yeah, never mind, it doesn't matter, yes.
Well, I think you're voting before town meeting, but obviously, to everyone's point, we may be back here in a month, so...
So I entertain a motion for what we are presenting at town meeting.
I'll make a motion that we accept the FY '21 budget as presented tonight at the public hearing.
A second.
Hey, that was Mary with the first, and Mara with the second. And then, any discussion?
I think we've discussed as much as we can.
We've discussed those out.
We, we have.
All right. Okay, so then I'm going to take this vote by roll call, because we're in a remote environment. Lydia Clancy.
Yay.
Mary Brantley.
Yes.
Mara Hogan.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Beth Lynn Houlihan, yes. Thank you for the reminder, you guys, because I'm glad you got my back for this, as we're trying to move through these things, so I appreciate it. All right, so now we're ready to move on to summer programs, which is item number nine, and we have five minutes allotted for this, it's just information and discussion.
We need five minutes on that. I just had a conversation with Lois earlier today, I don't know what day it was, but it had, it wasn't, it wasn't today. And we will not, Excel will not be providing summer school this year, because the guidelines provided for this type of program will make it difficult for her to procure the PPE equipment, and to be honest with you, the money is not there for her to purchase it ahead of time. So somebody would have to shell out the money for her to, to do that. So, you know, at this point, many districts, programs like her on the fence, but we decided to make the decision sooner than later. So that being said, we're going to cancel that this year, but she is part of the Green Meadow Committee for opening up next year, so she's really participating in that committee and trying to be proactive in how, what that program can look like next year. But summer school, looking for... But summer school looking for from. ESY, looks like we can open up some very small programs that have to be very structured. Carol is working on it now as far as small groups and 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 looking for ways to address that. And she's working with with Dan Costello to try to work on bringing some kids back in at least. Some of the issues we have, you know, what kind of? What is that going to look like? How is the student who needs one to one going to be six feet away? So these are some of the things that we're trying to work through right now and we're getting clarification on. But looks like we can have some sort of in person ESY for a very small population. Most of the summer programs for ESY will be remote. Letters have gone out to parents that are interested in that. And again, no Excel. That's all that I have on that.
Okay. I would imagine that's very disappointing all around.
Yeah, I know. I think that's it's the first time I think many in the community are probably hearing that. And I mean, it's not, I think hugely surprising. I mean, I know personally, I've been camped the past couple of weeks, you know, cancellations all around. It's it's very difficult, you know, like kids wearing masks and, you know, not wearing masks. And how does that work? And. It's tough stuff.
How do you keep a four year old with their mask on? They want to play with their friends. They want to hug each other. They want to kiss. I mean, they want to do things like that, you know, it's very difficult. Couldn't you can't take them on field trips. So it just made the Excel program very difficult.
Right, it would. And I imagine that there's new staff also considerations that everyone has a different comfort level and know what they are able to do and high risk potentially.
Some of the summer camps later in the summer still we're looking at maybe some of the summer sports camps. The governor did announce that there could be some teams. We're still waiting a little bit longer on that one to see what it looks like. Before we put some of the end of the summer programs together. Outside camps, we may be able to do, but at this point, we're just tentatively putting them on hold for another two weeks. Then we'll really make a final decision on those, like softball camp and and such. So we're taking a look at those. I can just move on to my next item unless you want me to.
Yeah, unless there's any other comments or questions.
No, I just thought that was helpful for to hear and, you know, equally like.
Yeah, Lois was disappointed herself, but.
I know, I know. She's.
So.
She's fantastic. We're trying to do that.
Yeah.
All right. So again, in this. Forging ahead in all uncertain times, graduation plans.
Well, our graduation plans were totally scrapped. Because as Lydia mentioned, a lot of our plans don't come out to the last minute. So we had planned for graduation last Thursday. The commissioner, somebody came, I don't know, somebody came, a commissioner came out with guidelines on drive up drive in graduation. So we had a drive in graduation. We were working on to have Mill and Maine in the same day as the town meeting. But unfortunately, as a result of the new guidelines, we were not able to do that. So to the credit of the class advisors, the seniors and Mr. Kerry Janus and Mrs. Murphy, they really came up with a new plan. So let me just tell you a little bit about what's happening for the senior activities. On Friday, June 4th, 5th, which was the originally scheduled senior day. The board selectmen deemed that as senior senior Maynard High School Senior Day. So my high school seniors will be having a parade at 2:05. They insisted to have it at 2:05 because that's officially when they would have graduated. They're meeting at the high school and decorating their cars and they'll have a parade. They're going to drive through town on an established parade route with the police there. So the high school principal and the Maynard Police Department are working to really make sure this gets coordinated. So that is happening on June 5th. And as I said earlier, new guidelines were conveyed by the commissioner on May 21st. So the new graduation. Will be against the same date. Is it even in here? The original graduation plans had to be scrapped, da, 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 da. The in person drive in is not allowed. So I'm just going to read him what it is. So what we're going to do now is the seniors will be meeting on graduation day at the high school. Mr. Kerry Janus will be there. Mrs. Murphy will be there. Students will receive their diplomas in a drive by graduation. So Mrs. Murphy will be announcing the student's name. They'll drive up. Mr. Kerry Janus will leave their diploma on the table. He'll back away. Students will get out of the car with their parents. They'll take a picture and then move forward. Next car will proceed in the same manner. Mrs. Murphy will announce their name, go get out of their cars with their families, take a picture and do that. So that that will be a way to get the diplomas on. June 20, July 24th, after July 18th, the governor has allowed or the commissioner has allowed in person graduations. So on July 24th, Maynard High School is planning an in person graduation. It is very strict, very structured. And they'll give you specific details as we get closer to the date. But right now they will have a Maynard High School in person graduation on the field on July 24th. So like a second graduation. So that is the plan.
Is that when the school committee gets to? Because I I feel like I don't know when we're supposed to be able to go. And I know we have historically gone to some celebration.
I I would think it's going to be the 24th because I mean, I won't even be making a speech on on because nobody's going to be there on on.
Can we can we stand by a fence like 10 feet apart? I mean, I just want to see the something.
I think you could sit in your cars and watch the kids drive.
Yeah, I feel like so removed for not seeing that. I feel like all of this kind of culmination to to witness some.
It is pretty awesome to witness.
It is.
It really had fun. I mean, I had so much fun last year. And so I just wanted to, is is it the better to do the one on alumni field that we might be able to socially?
That's going to be very structured too. So I'm not even sure. It's going to be very limited capacity. So.
Might be the 13th.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know. If you could maybe talk to Chuck about it, if there's an opportunity for it, maybe one of us goes to want like, you know, not everybody, you know, but at least if there's some way we could have schools committee representation at in some manner.
I'm sure there will be something on the 24th. There'll have to be some sort of representation. It'll just be like the kids are going to be sitting in their chairs six feet apart with circles, you know, in in the grass. And they can't leave their circles. It's going to be something like that.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, so that's how that's going to work on the 24th. But very strict guidelines. But I'm sure that absolutely people can, the school committee can go. But I think they're limiting the number of people for families to go.
Yeah.
But again, I I would certainly recommend that you, if you can go to the 13th, that would be great. Again, I think I'm going to be there. You know, I may be getting a lawn chair and staying far away and and watching it just myself.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. I would totally do that if that's what I don't want to. I don't want to crash anything. But I want to know if there is a best opportunity, what that would be and how I could, you know, at least see some of that celebration in some way.
Yeah, yeah. And I will talk to Chuck to see because I was I was wondering how I was going to do that myself. So I will talk to Chuck and let you know.
Okay, that'd be great.
But we also don't want the whole town out there either because that's defeating the purpose of the.
Right, no, no, I I get it. I get it.
Yeah. Okay, and June 11th, there's a virtual senior awards night. So each year, a few days before graduation, they celebrate the achievements of our matriculating seniors with awards of certificates, plaques, trophies and scholarships. This year, they're going to do so virtually through a video presentation, very similar to what they did at the sports night on the athletic awards banquet. And they're doing it virtually prepared by staff members on behalf of our graduates. I made my video today. I can't say I loved it. Again, I'm not a big fan of doing videos either. So but. So the videos will become available at 6:00 PM. Did you say 6 o'clock, Mary? I had.
Yeah, 6:00 PM came from Chuck. And a link will be sent out prior to that date for everybody to be able to to go on.
Yeah. And so, you know, the seniors have been done a great job. They're doing their best to be as celebratory as they can. And they've really been involved. Have you noticed all of the signs around town? You know, they're making the best of it. They're very resilient, innovative. Really nice group of kids. So they've done a nice job. And it's been a rough year with the fall with the triple E and you got the pandemic in the in the year. This is at the end of the year. They can certainly have something to talk about with their kids. When they get all their grandkids, you know, take a picture of them by their car getting their diploma. So it'll be memorable. Okay, that's what I have.
Thank you. Thanks for everyone that's been involved with all that planning and then replanning.
Yeah, and it was really it was really great to hear how they expanded the opportunity to celebrate. So it wasn't just only the 13th. It just all the different, trying to meet all the different desires from so many different people. The parade got to be, you know, included in there in some way, which is great to have. I think the the breakdown of the different small groups of getting their diplomas. I think that's, you know, great that that was able to be worked out. I know there was some concern about the timing of the 13th because that is also town meeting. But knowing that there's also another celebration later on with the full class is is really another day to celebrate, which they deserve totally hands down.
Initially, the idea was to hope to share services because why they had the video people out there, that was initially the thought. But now that we're not using Mill and Maine, it actually the town is appreciative that they have that day to set up instead of the day before now. So it's working out for the town better as well. We had a meeting with them earlier this week too.
Great. Thank you. All right. Unless there's anything else on that, we are now going to move into members' comments. And we have 10 minutes allotted for this section. Go ahead, Mary.
So just a couple of big thank yous again. Thank you to everyone that did put together the graduation plans because just looking day to day at how extensively it was done. It was not an easy task and I think the kids will be proud and and they'll actually have an expansive celebration, which is absolutely what they deserve. So that's number one. And number two, thank you to the high school staff for helping all of our students graduate, be awarded diplomas. That is another huge kudos. Because again, with, you know, with as challenging as this spring especially has been. There might have been some kids that were on the fence. So the teachers, as per usual, really, really step it up. So so grateful for that. And then I did, I had a question about the roof for the Green Meadow, some of the project. We had, we had talked about the possibility of CBI doing something ahead of town meeting so that we'd be ready to for bids and that after town meeting. I think to have them do a a design or something. I'm I'm kind of fuzzy on the details. But are we having anything done before town meeting or waiting until the vote happens? And then we're just going to go 150 miles.
No, Greg had funding. They had funding left in the roof line where they started. The board of selectmen approved that he could engage in like administrative contracting piece to start that. So that part, yes, it hasn't, I think it was maybe like, it was over, he has like a $50,000 threshold. So it was over like, it was like 60 or something. And and so they used money that had was approved last year for roofing expenses. They had about 80,000, I think, left there. So he was, he had approval from the board of selectmen to use that to start with engaging with contract with CBI. And I don't know, Lydia had anything else to add to that?
Oh, just that the, I mean, the board of selectmen had, I believe they discussed it this past week. And yes, and they approved. That Greg could access those funds, but also the structural integrity analysis is going to go forward. And that money is coming out of the the general roof fund for all municipal facilities.
All right, I was more thinking about the 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 roof project at Green Meadow, just so that we're not sucking wind halfway into the summer. And so we don't, you know.
Right. But the structural analysis is part of that, is it not? Yeah.
I think that was a separate ask. So they had a fund that.
It's a separate ask, but wasn't it going to help us determine how urgent we needed to get part of it done and whether or not we could reoccupy the pre K wing come this fall?
I think it was going to provide another data analysis contingent. If other factors don't work. So like if the something fails and we only get a certain amount, like what area is there structural? Do you need to keep something closed? It's just another piece of data to help us, you know, in decision making. I'm sure we'll need in the future. That's how I understood it.
Yeah, as far as I know, it was. We were able to check so that then if we were able to check, because they had been visual inspection before, so it hadn't actually been. They hadn't looked through that whole area. So to be able to do that, then they'd know if for if we there was in fact, well, we need to do all like we, this is what we actually need to do or close it down. So that was kind of the.
Yeah, could it could it would stay in another winter is essentially what.
I'll double check with them. I thought I got an email. I'm checking right now. I can't see it. So I I will double check.
Yeah. But Mary, to your original question, yeah, they Greg was also working parallel in in proceeding with the Green Meadow Roof Project. Admin, yeah, engaging in the contract for the administrative piece. There was funding for that.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Mary. Would like to go next.
I can go next.
All right. Natasha, take it away.
So CPAC collaboration team had a meeting yesterday to kind of do a temperature check and on on programming considerations that were being discussed. And to just reassess like summer program. Mary Jane spoke to to some of that. And Mary Jane, thank you for attending as well. I thought it was a very good conversation to to have. Obviously more to come, but you know, there was concern raised about, you know, special education students and PPE and how those kids would, you know, be able to, you know, be in a classroom with that. And so a lot of unknown. One thing that was helpful to hear for clarification was that they, one of the changes, the language based classroom at Fowler. So that is no longer modeled in the way that was initially proposed and that. That resource, because of the extensive literacy certifications, is being moved to Green Meadow to better support the younger grade for OG and Wilson, which I think, you know, is a great decision. Considering the dyslexia piece and all those conversations. It was clarified that that would not be the teacher going into the co talk class, but would be providing supports other ways for her literacy areas. So that was. That was another piece that was helpful to hear. The CPAC team is also had put out a survey to families which will be collecting feedback about services and and the results of that will be shared with administration to help, you know, their planning in any program programmatic aspects that may happen over the summer. We do have some continued ongoing conversations about the, oh, oh, the the job that we're, it's called, apparently somehow the title got evolved. It's the Building Director of Building Operations. So I know it was Facilities Manager, but how the MOA looks, the draft MOA is being worded. So I just want, not that that has any other detrimental impact, but it is a piece that the wording somehow got changed. And also, I don't know. Indigenous Peoples' Day, I know this was something that we had before COVID. We had a task force that talked about two aspects, curriculum and calendar. And I think at some point, and that got interrupted because of obvious circumstances. But at some point, I think the school committee might want to revisit a timeline on when we would want to plan that that conversation. Two parts. One is maybe schedule a time that we want to plan it. And then also, how do we engage the school again or reengage the school and the students under the circumstances, if that's possible? So again, more to come on that, but I certainly want to hear, you know, Jennifer, Mary Jane, or Brian as well. Because I imagine this will go into the summer. And, you know, Indigenous Peoples' Day currently is Columbus Day for, and that's in October. So I think it'll creep up on everybody sooner rather than later, considering all the other projects people are working on. And just one last thing. I will be offline beginning June 5th for a period of time for a couple of weeks. I will be having some surgery. So just for, I'll have my out of office on for my school committee. But I just wanted to just bring highlight some just very brief awareness to to my availability or potential. availability or potential lack of availability, which the timing of, I'm very disappointed of because of, it falls right around graduation celebration. So that's where if I could find one that I would, would love to be able to just show up and sit, that would be great for, for me. And I can talk to you separately about that, Mary Jane.
Okay. Sounds good. Yep.
Great.
Thank you, Natasha. We are going to continue to send you good vibes. As we make it work. All right. Who'd like to go next?
Oh.
Okay, Mara.
I, I just had one, one question, um, for Mary Jane, whether or not she could share, what was going on with the, um, director of student services?
It's funny that you'd say that because I was thinking, oh crap, I didn't put, I didn't put that into my.
Well, I was going to ask you, but I didn't know if, um, if you had that conversation with Brian and how that, you know.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should, um, yes. Sorry, Lydia, I'm sounding like you here over here. Um, so, um, unfortunately the candidates that, uh, that the team interviewed, um, really did not, um, pan out. So, um, I did have a conversation with Brian. Um, so, um, each of them are very gracious. They, um, received a phone call that says, thank you for the interview, but at this time we are, we're looking for somebody with a, you know, different, different qualifications that you can offer us. So at this point, we just, um, are looking for an interim, um, director. We do have a little bit more time. I mean, um, Carol's not leaving till August 1st. So we do have a little bit more time on that one. And hopefully, um, you know, I did reach out to Brian and he said he, you know, he knows a couple of people that, uh, that may be interested that are retired or, you know, he'll reach out to them as well. We did post it on School Spring, um, and, and Charles is really confident that, you know, a lot of retirees are happy to do, to do work like that until you can, uh, repost the position. Right, right now I think people are very concerned, um, with what's going to happen next year, you know? So I think people are, really want to stay put, you know, at this point. So, so that, that's what that, um, that's what that worked out.
I think it was great that, um, and Charles mentioned this, that, uh, which I thought was really helpful for context, that an interim role offers the opportunity to, uh, expand the applicant pool as well for, to your point, retired candidates who may not, who have broader expertise, but may not apply for a permanent role, um, similar to an interim superintendent and sometimes. So, um, that was, that was great to hear that, the understanding behind that as well.
I can tell you that there's been quite a few superintendent searches and I know of at least, uh, five or six and the candidate pool is extraordinarily shallow. Very, very shallow. Um, people are just, they're taking people from other positions, um, and they're just stealing. This is what's happening now. The pool is just, um, it, it's a difficult, difficult job. And it's, it's emotionally, mentally, physically draining and, and, and a lot of people really are not, uh, moving into that, into that realm. It's a very, very difficult job.
One of the things that Charles had mentioned was that, um, for retirees, that the state has, um, made some of their rulings for, for those people to be able to.
You know, yep.
It's, there, there's not going to be a, a time limit or a, um, uh, monetary.
Right. The cap has been lifted, yes.
So we'll have a, a bigger, bigger pool.
Yep. So yes, that is posted. There's two people on them right now that have been posted and, uh, that's all I'm going to say.
Thanks for the update.
I, I don't have anything else right now.
Thank you, Mara. Lydia?
Um, I don't really have a whole lot, just, um, policy committee. We're still working on the public comments and, and specifying procedures. And there are several others that we're working on, but we won't be meeting again until after the June meeting. Budget Subcommittee, I'm not sure when we're meeting again, but I know that it won't be until after, um, town meeting. And I think that's it. I don't, I feel badly that I don't have all these kudos and warm fuzzies to send out. I, I'm, my husband says I'm a Vulcan, so.
No, you know, you know who would be, um, Julie, um, the community member. I know she's been.
Uh, I think that's a secret.
Oh, I'm not saying what she's going to do, or I'm just saying she's been very active in coordinating many appreciations within our community. And so, um.
Yes, but yes, she's been fantastic.
On, for many different things. And so I think it, it's worthwhile to just give her, um, a shout out for all of her work in trying to bring all levels together and, and, and bringing joy to a very unjoyous time of year. It's for some. So thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Julie.
Yeah. Don't, don't forget all the people that rose to the occasion, like within a minute. This is.
Yeah.
Oh, God.
The best town. I'm telling you, you ask them and before the words are out of your mouth, um, they're coming forward and saying, what else can we do? So we're pretty damn lucky.
Yep. Lydia, a question about, um, policy? I know we've done a lot of policy approvals. How do we envision the mechanism of those getting on the website in a, a manner that is accessible, like in the new formatting? What is the plan for that?
That, um, that is a Colleen question, I believe.
You okay?
Because she is the one who, who takes the policy and then re-formats it to what everyone's used to looking at and then uploads it. So.
Yeah, it looks like a monstrosity of a, um.
We'll, we'll be.
Effort.
We'll be formatting it more like the MASC, I imagine.
But Colleen and I.
Probably a slow roll.
Together on that. Yeah.
Okay, okay. So you guys, you guys are on that. I just know we had some really good ones that were recently approved and going through. And I want to get those out there for the public to see because we keep referencing them. And so just having them accessible, I think is also equally important.
Anything else, Lydia?
Hmm. No.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to say, I just have a few little things. One is, um, excited to see that the solar panels have been moving forward. I feel like it's nice that that's going to have to get lost amidst everything else. So that's going to be great, um, to have happen. It's been being talked about for so many years. So I just give kudos. I know Michelle Resendez and Patrick would also help to make that happen.
Yes, yes.
And I also want to say we're, we're really missing our, um, our seniors.
Yes.
Were providing us with the, the student report. So.
Should we invite them to participate in the June meeting?
Yeah, that would be nice if, I think that we were kind of going more bare bones with everything, but it would be really nice to have them in on that meeting.
Have them call in and, yeah.
Yeah.
Just have them like attend, like not work anything, just like.
Yeah.
Report. Not for the whole thing. Maybe they can just come for a few minutes.
I'd love them to give their last report, like their last report for the year.
We don't know who's taking over next year. Do we know who's taking over next year?
No.
Yeah. So they need to hand off the baton.
They do. All right. We'll, we'll talk to them. Uh, it was also exciting to see the, the end of year events that are, have been considered and planned very thoughtfully in each of the buildings. So very grateful for that. And I wanted to give a special kudos. Fowler's been, for the third graders, Dan and Mike have been doing, um, every week, they've been talking with them and answering questions for that they might have and really starting to just build that community for them as, as it's, and help mark that milestone. As their, of course, my son's been like, eh, because he has an older daughter, my daughter's older and. You want to do this? You're missing out. Um, so I think that's just, those kinds of thoughtful things and the step-ups and they're, they're just very, it's great that finding ways to continue with those things, um, and build community in that way. I want to see if Natasha will send out our, send to us instructions for how we could try to get on the maskless serve again. Cause I, I want to make sure that we try to do that. You don't need to talk about it now, but I wanted to mention that before I forgot.
Yes.
And then, um, the, you mentioned policy. The subcommittee meetings, I just wanted to point out that when we have access to those meetings, we've never recorded them before. And we don't need to record them, presume when they're posted and they're publicly, um, accessible. So if you're, if you're providing the information for them to be publicly accessible and for people to attend them, we don't need to record them or post them. So just for everyone to be, to understand that. So that's kind of the, it's an important distinction because you have to make sure that they're publicly accessible at the time of the meeting.
Yeah, I wanted to, the, the one for, um, the tri-board, the, the budget one, that one I felt like was not publicly accessible. Um, and I don't know, that, is that, is that, um, a Justine question? Okay.
Okay. Cool. Um, so that's it. So I think then, unless anyone needs to say anything else, we're going to move into our next agenda item, which is to, um, which is agenda item number 12. We're going to, uh, move to go into executive session under, by roll call vote, under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. And we will not be returning to open session. So I'm going to adjourn, um, we are not going to actually adjourn. We are going to, um, do roll call to move into executive session. So I.
Do we go into a breakout room or are we? How does that work?
We can, um, Colleen, everybody and you'll just continue in this.
Okay. All right.
Cause they have a waiting room, right? You won't, we just basically.
Yep.
So thank you to everyone that's, um, that's attended this meeting tonight. Um, so we'll go, uh, into executive session by roll call and then move into the meeting so that we're moving out of our original meeting into that based on, so Mary Brannely?
Yes.
Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy?
Yes.
And Beth Lynn Hulhan, yes. So we're going to move in now at nine 27 to executive session and, um, I don't know for this one who we're bringing with us.
Um, I think Mary Jane, Jennifer and Irene. I'm sorry.
Brian?
Yeah, yeah, Brian.
All right. Do you? Missed a few.
I think that would be the most relevant.
Is there anyone left in the waiting room or in the meeting here that we need to, um, boot out?
Oh, I don't, let me, I don't.
I didn't know.
I think that's it. It's Jen, Mary, Jane, Irene, Brian and school.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
Do you need me or am I also leaving?
Can you stay for notes potentially?
I could.
I don't, I envision this is going to be very long either. I just, um.
No, I'm here. I'm typing away, so I might as well.
So just to, just before we get into that, is there anywhere for, I mean, I guess we can, people.
Stop recording.